He looks pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll call the meeting to order, we'll start with collective allegiance.
By the name of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vol call.
Smackler.
Here.
Gray love.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
Easy.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approval of agenda? Uh, so moved.
Okay.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Prove minutes.
We're moving.
Second, motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard, for those who are not specifically appear on the agenda? Hearing none. Um, is Brent, Brent, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay. And Brad, you're, you can hear us? Brad, are you there? Well. So Brendan, do you have this award in front of you, do you?
No, I, I haven't, I haven't got it yet.
Okay, I've got the copy, that's why I was wondering if Brad was gonna say anything.
Oh yeah, he was supposed to be on, but.
He's on there, he's just not answering.
Okay.
But anyway, we've got the low slump bid of two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents. And that is to Journey Group Companies, doing businesses, Sufol, SFC Civil Constructors. Do I have any questions or concerns?
As long as, yeah, as long as Brad and Brent don't have any questions about it, I mean, I was impressed with the spread and, uh, and what a apparent bargain we got on that one, so. If Brad and Brent think it's a responsible bid, then I'm super happy.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, it's good.
Great, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second, motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to go into ditch board.
I moved.
Second, motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Invoices from all tag for Clay Creek Ditch.
Pay the invoice.
Second. Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Then we've got an invoice for, from complete excavation for Yankton Clay Ditch. That was a culvert replacement.
Pay the invoice five thirty-one for the excavation.
Second, motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Brent, do you have anything else for ditch board?
As I know, no.
Okay. Anybody else, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to come out.
So.
Second, motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes, we're in regular session. Oh, Andy, surplus property?
Yeah, just keep coming, back to your cleaning house here, so we had, uh, last meeting, we talked about, uh, some bikes and some guns that we had that were surplus, then we got court authorization to, uh, dispose of them, but there were a few that were waiting on notice given to the, to the owner, and so we've got, uh, what? Eight more, eight more that we got the okay from the court to dispose of, and so I was just, uh, if you don't have a copy, I think you might have it. Just want to get the authorization to do that, I've, uh, worked with Gerard Auction and, uh, Brent's same, uh, we're gonna have a sale in April, where they're gonna do a county surplus sale, so. Brent's got some stuff, and then I'll have these and bikes and a few other items, we'll dispose of.
I move to surplus these items.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? They'll go through, um. The FFL and Gable.
They do that.
Good.
Well Gerard has their own FFL.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Thanks.
Hey, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't figure out, uh, my, my unit wouldn't unmute, um.
Okay.
So, I, I just got, if you got any questions for me now, uh, otherwise, Carrie, if you just, um, scan me that notice of award document when it's signed, and I'll take care of it from there, and we'll go, and I'll get you the bids, um, when Jesse comes to town here in a week or so.
Okay.
Sounds good, thanks Brad.
Okay, I, I'm gonna sign off.
Okay, okay, thank you. Drew, do we need to wait till nine twenty for yours, that's an advertised, right?
It's not.
It's not. Okay. What do you?
Maybe, yeah. Thought maybe you put him up to it.
It's got a plat over by Greenfield Road, um, in Beersford, uh, just gonna be a replat for an estate, so.
They're just, just breaking up a property.
Yeah, just breaking up.
Estate purposes.
Yes. Yep, estate planning, yes sir.
Sounds good.
Is there anything on our behalf on that, I noticed, I looked at that property, how is that road coming into the rest, like, I noticed there's a farm right there, too.
There's an easement, uh, there.
Yeah.
Uh, in between that unplatted upside down L and, uh, track one, there's a platted easement going through there. Okay, so that's, that's the new easement that's ref-.
Yeah, so there is easement into the property.
So, so it has access, yeah. There was a couple little, um, just technical careful reading stuff, um, Brent's gotta put his name and title in a couple boxes where he didn't put his name and his title, um, and then at the point that it comes to us, I think usually it's, it's already been seen by the planning and zoning, which I think it has, but those signatures aren't on the copy that's in our packet, so, just making sure that those get caught, cause part of our job is just making sure we do have final air of oversight and all that stuff, so.
Cause I'll have to open sign the big.
Yep, yep. Otherwise, it seems sensible to me.
You have motion?
I move to approve the replat.
Second. Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Not there.
I got, I got one, okay.
Okay, uh, did you get through all vouchers?
Yes.
Okay, did everybody get to see all the vouchers, the, the ones that were sent out this morning to us? Wishes on the vouchers, man? Any vouchers? Thank you, have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. New personnel. So for planning and zoning, uh, we, we've hired Noah Westergaard, he will be taking over for Drew, here in the next, Noah's already started, but what did you say, nothing, within the month? By the end of April. He'll be full, he'll be the lone person there, Bruce helping in transition, and then we've hired for the extension secretary position, that was Molly Sykes that we hired, so. She will be starting first part of April, I believe it is. April seventh, is that what it is?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Little bit of turnover in the jail, so, uh, we hired, uh, Justin Verne just yesterday, he hasn't started yet. Uh, Kyle Nielsen was a rehire, he used to be a jailer here several years ago, we brought him back, both of those are part-time jailers, and then we had a, uh, a new full-timer, uh, Jozlin Clute, and so those filled all of our spots, we had two full-time openings, one of our part-timers moved to full-time status, Jozlin took the other one, creating two part-time openings, and then we hired those two, so we're back to full staff again in jail. So, and then, uh, working on hiring a jail administrator, Tiffany Hasby's now a month out from her retirement date, so she had given us two months notice, it's gotten me, taken me a month to get to the point where we're about to do interviews and hopefully, uh, have somebody on staff to replace Tiffany before she retires April twentieth, the end of this pay period. So that'll be my changes, I'll report to you about that one when we get there.
Sounds good, thanks.
The, on the education front, the education person for four age will be, the interviews are hard to start to inverse them, um, as well, so. Everybody employed.
Hopefully. Apartment monthly reports, everybody get to see those?
Anything for Tim Tony Park? Um, oh, just, uh, see. I, I sent around, just wanna make sure everybody did receive, um, uh, the numbers on visitations, uh, the comparison twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, so if anybody had any questions or anything, that'd be all we had a meeting, uh, last week, I, just all the regular stuff, getting ready for the new year, we implemented a little bit, uh, more formalized onboarding process to make sure everybody has a kind of clear understanding what their responsibilities are going into season, so, but that's the only, only real change, oh, and then another thing, I think, looking forward, uh, we also formed a, uh, budget sub, subcommittee, um, so that is gonna be working on preparing a budget for next year, it's not something that the park has ever worked with before, they just sort of worked with income coming in and the known expenses and things like that, but as we're, as we're trying to plan bigger things and plan longer term, um, we thought that'd be a good idea, so, uh, that's something that, uh, I'm not sure if you guys.
Building project updates. Guess they don't really have any updates on the law enforcement center, it's moving along, we're, we're ahead of schedule, so.
Great, this weather keeps cooperating.
Yeah, yeah, which, they'll start pouring concrete again outside, I would assume here pretty quick, and we're working pretty hard inside.
Awesome. They're doing all those divider walls, is that right?
Oh yeah.
Like it's cells and.
It's changed a lot.
You have anything else? In jail?
The, uh, the cells, I mean, it's, it's moved a lot since you guys were there, um, I wouldn't recommend you, yeah, I mean, you're sure entitled to keep coming, but give us a couple more weeks and all the interior walls will be in place, and then, you know, you won't be hearing, there's gonna be this here and there's gonna be that there, but the, uh, the secure part of the jail is pretty much done, there's uh, half, the upper half, one more wall going up, and then, uh, then the, uh, cement block walls will continue to be put in, in the area that basically bridges between the secure part of the jail and the admin side of the building, and so, there's a lot of cement blocks still to go up, and that takes time, but in the next few weeks, that should all be in place, and, uh, then they, they expect to have it essentially what they call substantial completion, it's gonna appear to be done, you know, by the end of May, but there's gonna be months of fine tuning, uh, electronics, a lot of tech in these buildings these days, so that takes time. It's coming along though, everything's going real well.
It's kinda easy to navigate through there now, you can't just step in the air.
Yeah, no, no more walking through walls. Have to go through doors now.
Yeah. Yeah, I was there last Wednesday, actually, I had to go outside and find a different door, cause I couldn't remember how to get back around. Uh, let's see, Scott, I see you're here, so we might as well might as well go with you.
Alright. Well, maybe it might be time to get that ball rolling on repurposing of the safety center here. We, together, or that might be, uh, Sheriff House probably be on it, it's kind of a think tank over all these years, got a lot of ideas and stuff.
Down on paper.
I think you just got voluntold.
So. Anyway, I think we should start that process, so we can kinda hit the ground running, when they start vacating here, what, you know, what are we gonna do, type thing, are we gonna have Tegger on as a liaison to help out, are we gonna buy Sullivan on this with their design build, uh, procurement forms, how are we gonna approach it, so, but think first that we can sit down, we'll gather these ideas, so, yeah, I think this is the one we should roll with, and there's always a lot of, ton of hidden stuff in these things, you know, we think, okay, we're gonna drop this wall, okay, that's great, that's fine, that's maybe ninety new grid. This building is pneumatic system for controlling HVAC, so you got airlines and walls that's gonna be interrupted. It's probably time to update for pneumatic to digital anyway, but I mean, there's all, they're just they say, these things just, they're, they're as simple as you think they are, you know, and since we're doing some, 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 some substantial stuff upstairs, or maybe next door in this room, I mean, we're gonna start crossing the line, we're trying to say, hey, you know, you gotta fire sprinkler in this place, you, you just don't know. Anyway.
So, uh, so, you've talked mostly about the, um, the technical build out side of things, um, there's also like on the design side, I mean, I'm assuming that this is something that all department heads, uh, well, except for maybe Rod, uh, have an interest in, in whether their office, gonna get any additional office space, or like what their needs are, so like, where, where are those conversations, have there been, you guys talk at department head meetings about dreams of new spaces that you want, and how you guys are intending to, or desiring to, to divvy those things up, where, where are those conversations?
So the climate.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, we have had a few conversations as department heads, um, you know, some formal, some informal, I've had, uh, people reach out to me, uh, you know, verbally or through emails, and I've kept track and notes on what they like to see, blah, 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 so, you know, you know, can we fulfill everyone's wishes and dreams, probably not.
Never.
I know, that's, that's what this committee's for, I would say, you know, I say, hey, this is what we think the best interest is, so, but.
And as you're juggling around the things that people are sharing with you, can, can you see it all fitting in the spaces without a lot of, uh, what, without too much contentious discussion?
Yeah, I mean, the discussions we've had is.
Everybody's.
So like Michael's office, the state's attorney will go on the police department side.
Good.
And then, the treasurer's gonna take up most of what the sheriff's department is. And then a couple of those jail cells, we're thinking about converting to bathrooms, because they've already got the plumbing there, so.
Yeah, that's smart.
They'd be handicapped, easier to be handicap accessible, accessible. And then we still have to leave space for when Andy brings prisoners over for court.
Oh, right, yep.
So there's portions of it that we, we can't touch, so like the Sally Port needs to stay.
Yep.
The Sally Port. Then you'll have, Andy's gotta tell us which cells he's planning on using. And then we'll reconfigure who's, trying to get Linnea out of the basement, Scott likes being down here by himself.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna try and move her out of the basement to some, you know, second floor, probably treasurer's office somewhere in there, or.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Michael's office, we'll have to figure that out, we need a place for, since we're reconfiguring third floor, we're gonna lose the public defender office, so we gotta find a space for them. And then what was the, was court services?
Court services.
We're gonna, we'll shuffle them somewhere, too.
Yeah, cause they're currently separated, the juvenile court service officer isn't in the same space as.
Drew, Drew wanted to get on first floor with his VA services, just makes sense.
Yeah, but he's leaving, so, and now, you know, Noah goes to the bottom of the list now.
I mean, I can work with.
Yeah, so we'll.
You know, because we all work hand in hand together, so, you know, we need to work something out.
There'll be, there'll be some, you know, the stuff in the courthouse, other than third floor, we won't have to like knock walls out or anything, so.
Yeah. Great.
And we do a walkthrough at some point in time up there and just.
That's an excellent idea.
Get a visual. You're talking the safety center, the law enforcement center here?
Yeah.
This one here, yeah. See, who's gonna do what, where.
Like, I got a ton of notes of stuff I would like to see happen, where they will or won't, you know, like, you know, we don't really have a decent janitor's floor on first floor, between either building, you know, maybe it's incorporate something at this point, maybe not, and also, and also all funding related, there's, uh, there's no air conditioning coil in the air handling unit that feeds this room, right now, we're stealing it off the, off the PD air handling unit, and it seems to be working, you know, do we wanna fire that thing up? One thing to consider is noise level, this building is gonna go up quite a bit, it's right on the side of that wall, so maybe we don't even wanna think about it, there's a lot of little things like that. So.
Yeah, so, how would you like to handle that, I think that's a great idea, like schedule, should we just schedule by email or something, or?
I'd leave that with the chairman.
Yep. And Andy's got, can let us over there.
After the next meeting or something, or?
Yeah.
That's good.
Will work next Tuesday.
Sure, yeah, I'm, just, just threw that out there, no.
And I'm pretty sure Rhonda has a laminated bar napkin that she's been drawing on.
I think step one, then, from what I, my recommendation would be is to put it on the agenda for next week, to, uh, create the committee.
Okay.
Uh, so that we can formalize the committee at a meeting, um, if you read through the design build packet, I just pulled it up, but it has to consist of, uh, the total voting members of the committee shall typically consist of a minimum of three persons and shall include a minimum of the facilities manager, one county commissioner, one individual designated by the commission, the commission shall also have the option of appointing not voting members, um, they would be involved in the discussion and interviews, that would lead up to the award of the design build contract, so, three is a minimum, um, and then ultimately, the commission could choose to have non-voting members, uh, the recommendation from Tegra was that they recommended I be a non-voting member, just because of we're very early on with this design bill, just so that I can help work through legal problems, so. I'm busy, but of course I'll do it, so, um.
Yes, well, that's where you go, click on camera.
Yeah, that's right, so, um, I'd say though, we should put that on for an official action next week to actually create that commission, um, or committee rather.
Okay. Anything else for the safety center?
Alright, that was it.
And you've got the trash receptacles?
Yeah.
Safety center?
Yeah, we did the walkthrough last Wednesday, last Wednesday, we had a meeting out there last Wednesday, and, uh, one of my jobs, I guess, was, uh, checking the waste receptacles for the LEC, and, uh, so I did that, I reached out to my supplier, made a list of what we're gonna feed out there, I've been looking at the blueprint, and talking to Connie Shields from Tegra, um, so, the price tag for waste receptacles, that, and this includes, uh, recycling receptacles was seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, Connie Shields said, that's a heck of a deal, but Travis said on the walkthrough, said, well, have you, have you ever reached out to waste management, so I reached out to waste management, um, talked to them, they put an eight, so I guess waste management, you don't they sort it all.
Themselves.
Themselves, so supposedly, they sort it all up to Sioux Falls, so, it would eliminate your recycling bins, for sure, no, and that was a pretty substantial chunk of change, I figured it up, um, so we'll eliminate that, and reduce some labor costs inside, obviously, too, from for facility management, um, so, an eight yard, they'd pick it up twice a week for three hundred and twenty dollars, and we're just, you see, he's just doing some quick math, and he said he thought twice would be enough, eight yards is about the largest you can get, um, so. You know, so I, so I did some more math on, so that's, so they're, they're saying that, that's forty dollars every time they pick it up, it seems kind of rather dirt cheap to drive down from Sioux Falls with a big truck, so I don't know about their.
Well, they're already down here for US.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they do city.
And they have some other, some other pickups down here, too, I guess, so what happens if you miss a day, cause of weather, this, this and that, how are we gonna fall back into the schedule? Well, I'm pretty sure we can work it out, cause we're down there several times, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I did very well, worst case scenario, let's see, that, we have to have it picked up three times, it'd probably be about four hundred and eighty a month, right now, we're paying a hundred and sixty-seven a month, for this dumpster out here, which is not an eight yard, but uh, I reached out to Remont Garbage Services to get a price on the eight yard, haven't heard, of course, we're, we're doing all our own separating in the house here, um, so that's kinda where we're at. I don't get real good when I, when I look up the reviews online for waste management, they're not good. For every ten, you got two that are positive, rest are negative. I don't know, might be something to think about.
And that, that dollar was just the, just recycling? That's not.
That was all garbage.
That's all, okay, they sorted.
You just throw it all.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all garbage. Just kinda bringing in perspective, what we got going out, on the LEC, we have a hundred and one office-sized trash cans out there. Uh, we got ten of the twenty-three gallon trash cans, the, you know, in the, got laundry, in the dormitory, laundry service, garage, windows lockers, men's lockers, so, you know, throughout the building, we've got ten of the larger ones, and the larger restrooms, and then we had seven places where we're gonna place recyclers, and one was up in the big conference room, that, uh, we have break rooms, deputies area, hall of purpose room, we got some other large rooms south of the building that we thought the recycling cans should be in there, so. That was kind of, the one for the for the conference room alone was the expense of one, that was like twenty-four hundred dollars, because really aesthetically pleasing to the eye, we'll say, so. Probably should be better investment for there, so, but, we cannot, I think, about I have my notes here, I think it was about three thousand, well, it was a little, it was more than three thousand dollars off, off the, uh, price tag on the trash cans.
Okay, so just to make sure I understood that in beginning of discussion, so it was like. Okay, so just to make sure I understood that in beginning of discussion, so it was like seven thousand was the cost for all of the. The receptacles you just listed, but if we were to go with waste management, we would not have to divide the streams of recycling and other trash. And therefore, we would be able to buy fewer trash cans and that would save us like three thousand dollars.
We, we wouldn't have to buy the, what I call the recycling centers, which is just a two trash cans.
Okay.
All right.
And then the monthly cost on that was like three seventy-two is what they were, they were saying, and we don't have any. If, if we were to go with anybody local, they wouldn't be able to separate it, so it's not really apples to apples, am I getting all that right?
Yep, so.
Well, it could be apples to apples, because we'd have to weigh what they're gonna charge us, a local poller.
Yep.
Versus what we're saving, I mean, if we're only gonna save the money for one year.
Yeah.
And then we were eating it up with costs through waste management, sure, then we might as well go with our own.
And I kinda did, when I kinda did the math, real quickly, that's about what you got.
Okay.
You might get a year and then.
I just had him look into it, because it could save us money, we might as well look at it, but if it doesn't make any, if it's not a long-term solution.
Yep, okay.
It's not worth doing.
You know, Vermillion Garbage reached out to me a couple of weeks ago. Wanted, wanted to know where we're at the L E C, if they could have a service, et cetera, et cetera. And this, they did not discuss much with them at that point in time, but like I said, the, the empty this month is a hundred and sixty-seven, so I can't imagine. Eight, eight yards is gonna be much more, and they're picking this up two times a week.
Cause this is like three yard.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Thanks for doing the homework on that.
That was all I had.
Thanks, Scott.
Yep, thank you.
We have executive session for contractual. You need to.
Oh, yeah, and legal, and legal, yeah, yeah. Okay, motion, I move to go into executive session.
Second. A motion of a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion passes. For an executive session right now.
Did you have a visitors to be heard item?
Yeah.
Okay, we normally do those at the very beginning of the meeting. Oh, well. We, I think we should probably allow that, um, uh, should we do our executive first and?
No.
Again?
We come out.
Yeah, you get motion to come out. All right, I, I move that we come out of executive session.
Second. A motion of a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes, and regular session.
Patrick.
So I had a lot of pushback when I tried to rezone. The, yeah, on the winery there, on both sides, I was only gonna rezone the one side by the river. And, uh, that first meeting, there was a lot of pushback, so I decided to use the egg for the land for egg purposes. And I'd like to start a pheasant farm out there and raise pheasants, and, um, so I did a lot of research myself. And I found a near code here for, uh, concentrated animal feeding operation. If it's under ninety days in a twelve-month period, it's not considered an animal feeding operation. Um, so I called the state, I called D A N R, and they told me that they don't regulate pheasants, so they have nothing to do with it. And then, um, talked to Travis here, Travis then said that, um, he's gonna follow the state law. Which I've talked to them five times and they said they won't get involved, and. Travis, Travis, if I'm correct, you're gonna, you, you wanna go off the note, other animals, uh, this did maybe consider case by case?
We can, but we're not gonna discuss this right now, I mean, you can.
Oh, okay.
Tell us the problem.
Yeah, in order for us to make a decision on anything, we have to have a, an agenda item and, and have to go through an order process, but anybody can speak on any item.
Okay, yeah, so, um, that is what Travis is trying to go based off of, but the state said they won't get involved because it's not a qualified species. And so I talked to the city as well, and they sent the, uh, Drew a message, and. Uh, on this email, they also said, we also checked with D A N R, and they do not regulate pheasant farms, since pheasants are not a regulated species. And then, uh, Drew actually said that, um, the city didn't know what they were talking about. And then, so I walked, I walked, ah, sorry, ghost strike. I, uh, went back in his office and I had a few questions about fencing. And he did, he refused to help me, because he said what I was doing is illegal. And I says, I'm not here to talk about, you know, the law, I'm here to ask you a question about fencing setbacks. And I have that, that conversation recorded, you guys would ever like to hear that, and I was nice about it, and he just refused to help me. And said my operation I was doing is legal, now my plan was to go to raise birds on one side of the road, after ninety days, we have a trailer that you put them in. Call them on the other side for another ninety, and then by then they'll be out of here. So that was my goal to use the land for, and I've talked to other pheasant farms, they don't smell. I know Travis said manure and flies would be a nuisance, well, pheasants eat flies, and, um, pheasants really don't smell. And I've talked to other operations and they confirm that, and then I did talk to a couple of other counties that, I have some friends that work in planning and zoning in. Other counties, I don't wanna mention their names, they also looked through this, and they said, yeah, everything I'm doing in their opinion is legal, so I, I guess I'm not sure. Um, I wanted to start putting in my fencing with the nets over it, my six-foot fencing, and then I'll just have a net over it, and then I'll have storage containers out there that I raids. Raise, uh, chicks in, and, um, after six weeks, they go out in the pen, and then I move them on the other side of the road after the eighty-nine days on the one side. But I also wanted to see if I could, um, make three different lots over there, so I have three different lots on that one side of the land, so basically I just move them every ninety days. By the twelve-month period, they'll be back in the same spot again. So, uh, I, I think it's a good purpose for the land, um, I mean, I don't see any nuisance there, I mean, I have trees. Um, I have a bunch of trees over there that are gonna block the view from the houses, which I could cut down, if I wanted to, and put hogs, uh, hogs on both sides, I mean. They want me to use the land for egg, and I guess, I could do hogs or cattle if I wanted to, right? I, I think this is the best option possible, it's gonna look nice down there, I make sure of it, and, uh, yeah, so my plan was to start. I called eight-one-one yesterday, making sure there's nothing out there, so I'm gonna have a bobcat out there, I'm gonna start drilling holes and putting fencing in, and. I just wanna make sure I'm gonna have all this time invested and, and money, I just wanna make sure that it's not gonna be an injunction or something crazy like that, that would happen. Um, but, yeah, so that's kinda where I'm at with that, and, uh. I just, if I have any question, because Drew now, I, am I, who do I talk to now, since he refused to talk to me?
You'll be talking to Noah Westergaard about planning and zoning issues as of the beginning of.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so we, so Drew is leaving his position, we'll have a new zoning administrator.
Okay, that's fine, and then like from the time being, like if I have a question this week, Dwight, am I, since he refused to help me?
Drew is the point person on that.
Okay.
Yep, and if you have things that need to be escalated beyond Drew, he's the department head for the planning and zoning. Um, then I would recommend, uh, requesting an agenda item, and, uh, we have to, we have to post notice before we can consider anything that we make any sort of a decision on. Or take any sort of action on.
Okay.
That would be the proper process. Yep.
Yeah, but in here it says I don't, see, my thing is that I don't need any permits, you know, based off of your guys' code here. Um, and I'm sure you guys already saw that, but it's right here, and it says ninety days or more in a twelve-month period. Well, if, to me, I feel like the county or whoever's trying to cherry pick the laws here. And go to the state law, because they don't like what this is, because if they go to state law, the state law says. Which I'm just trying to follow the law, and I called the state and the state tells me multiple times, they told me to look up this definition, and they said they don't regulate it, the livestock definition. Nowhere does it say pheasants in there, and I don't know if it's for the county to pick and choose on the state side, whether a pheasant is, is case by case, I think it's the state, right? As, as far as I would know, and, um. Yeah, so that's, but here's the state, the state law says forty-five days in a twelve-month period, and you, and you can't, you have to be within. Um, you'd have to be over one mile away from each other, so I wouldn't be able to move them across the street. So I guess that's why the county, I think, wants to push state law, because I'd only have forty-five days on the one side instead of going to the other, so, um. But yeah, that's kinda where I stand, and I just, if the state's telling me over and over again, they're, they're not getting involved, I think I would follow county code, right? That's what I would think.
I, I have some, just some general questions, I'm not saying yes or no to anything here, but. Specifically on the side against the hill.
Yep.
My bliss point there.
Yep.
Have you discussed this with the city of Vermillion whatsoever?
Uh, yes, yeah, I've met up with him.
Okay.
And, um, they told me everything I was doing is legal, they looked it up.
Okay, um, there's an old saying, having the right to do something doesn't always make it right, and I'm, my concern is, all those people on Bliss Point. What's their reaction gonna be to your pheasant operation, containers, netting? I'm, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Look for potential issues that you might have.
Yep.
By doing this.
Well, it's considered egg land, so I use it for egg purposes, right, the guy, the guy has to use his land for something, right?
I, I understand, and listen, I appreciate your, your. Uh, initiative.
Yeah.
I like to see guys go out on their own and. Try and make money, I, I love that. Just trying to look at. Some issues here with the, those residents up, up, up on the hill there.
Yeah, yep, so, um.
Let me, let me get to my second point, too.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Both of those parcels are notoriously wet. And many years out of ten, eight, say eight years out of ten, they're wet down there. So what's that effect gonna be on your operation?
Well, we did, I did put the pens up where it's a little bit higher over there, uh, and I can tell where the water stands, so it's, it's all mowed over there now, so it'll build a lot quicker.
I've noticed you've been out there.
Yeah, but I, I did keep the pens out of the lower areas where it doesn't really hold water much, because I can tell where it holds water, because I've been, you know, watching over the three years. So that part's taken care of, and then the second part is the containers would only be on the one side where the trees are covered up and everything, should only be the fencing. And the, a netting that goes over the fencing over there, but like I said, all those trees that I have are blocking the view. From where I have the nets right now, all those trees are, are gonna be blocking view in the summer, well, leaves on trees, so. I, I don't see exactly what the issue would be with people on the hill, but. Um, I guess it's egg land, and I had every right to put cows and hogs out there if I wanted to lease it out, you know, and, and let them, let them graze, because that. Does grow pretty thick, thick down there, so. But, I mean, I'm just, I mean, if you guys would allow me to get a permit, which I think would be a long, out process, and from. From the last meeting we had, when I tried to rezone a commercial, there were so many people against it, I don't see it passing. But I would leave everything on the one other side where all the trees cover up everything, you couldn't see anything unless you drive in there, if I could get a permit, but again, I don't see that passing, so. The, to, the way to make it work, I'd have to do it this way, in my opinion.
So were you denied a permit down there?
Uh, so the, the first meeting, um, there was a lot of pushback, and then I talked to Jim, and Jim mentioned that. Um, he doesn't think it would pass, because he talked, you know, he had a conversation with a few people on the zoning and everything that it wouldn't pass, so. I just told you, I said, just call it off.
That was, the, the rezone was, was denied.
Yep.
No, but, but not a permit?
No, not, no, except we, we, um. Rezone to the commercial.
Right, which was never denied.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, yes, that was, that was, uh, rescinded before, I, I, that's right, I request.
Yep, yep.
We had a very, very short meeting, and so I was.
Yeah, because you guys were all there for the first meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, so that's, is there any other questions that you guys may have?
Well, just so they, somebody knows, I mean, what type of number are you talking here?
Well, um. My first thing is, if you guys going and amend this code or change your code, I would be grandfathered in, correct?
We're not gonna change anything, I'm just wondering.
Oh, you're not, oh, okay, well, I'd like to be around that five thousand mark, birds, which isn't a ton. But I, I would like to expand, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold to that number. I would like to expand and get to more birds. But.
And, and you're gonna be, uh, meeting a lot of faces out here that are trying not to talk a lot, because we do have to be careful, um, to, to make sure that we're just following process carefully, so.
Oh, I see, okay, that makes.
So if you're looking at us, we're like, why is nobody saying anything, but.
Yeah.
We're, it, it's just, uh, it needs to be an agenda item for us to be taking actions and having, having robust discussion about it.
Okay, now, I guess, I don't know everything about this process, but would there be able. Would you guys be able to work something out with me where I just keep the operation of one side of the land, if you allow me to just. Shoot, do it over there instead of bringing it on the other side, or is that, is that a whole process of voting and? Or is it something that you?
I think you should get on the agenda for next Tuesday.
Yeah, yep, it sounds like you've got some pretty robust questions and.
Oh, when you say agenda, that like.
What else do you join meeting, but yeah.
Is there any way we could, because I talked to somebody, um, with the city, and don't quote me, but if I remember right, he said something like. Sometimes I, you can work stuff out without going to meetings, is that a possibility or no?
Nope, not on joint, not anytime, really.
I mean, if, if it was working out to work things out through the planning and zoning offices, then that, that would be the normal way that it's.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and then, and then eventually, if we needed to take an action like a rezone or approve a conditional use permit or something like that, then that, that's the point where you would have to have the joint meeting, but.
I see.
But normally, you'd, you'd work with the two planning and zoning offices.
If it was administrative.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna start putting this operation together, so I guess my thing would be is, um. I'll, I'll start doing, I'll, I'll start doing it the way I was gonna originally do it, but you guys want me to come back and, and talk about just getting a permit for the one side, is that? Is that what you mean?
It needs to be to a jurisdiction, so we have to, we have to sit with the city council, too.
Okay, and that's about a two-month process, process, isn't it, probably?
I, need, need necessarily be that long, I think it's, uh, two weeks notice or one week notice, what's the, what do you call? Drew?
It's a twenty-four hours, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just, yeah, it would just be a matter of us, uh, scheduling a joint jurisdiction meeting.
Oh, really? Oh, so it's just one meeting and just joint jurisdiction, and you can vote on, just having it on the one side and I won't do anything with the other side?
No.
Drew has, has a better understanding of that process than we do, so, I see him shaking.
So I think what you're, I think what you want is, as Drew had mentioned before. What he's told you, you don't agree with. So you're appealing, you're appealing his decision to the, to just the, the commission and the city council, right, you don't have to go through the planning. So that's what we need to do.
Oh, okay.
If you don't like Drew's decision and what he told you, you need to appeal that.
About the code, right, and going to state law?
So, so, so Drew's saying this is not a permitted use, that's an administrative decision that Drew is empowered to make? And so, so he has made that official deci- decision in this case, and so, what it sounds like you're interested in doing is appealing the decision that he has made. That this is actually a.
Oh, I saw, I got, oh.
That this is not a permitted use, and you're, you're claiming that this is a permitted use.
Yes.
And so that would be an appeal of that decision, and then we would sit as a quasi judicial body and, and we would hear that appeal and. To, to the city council, and we would decide if we, uh, agree.
Agree with him, a, a, and if you guys, um, agree with him, but I feel, what, what, what's the next step then, I guess?
Um, so you always have the, the power to continue to appeal things up into the court system, and if we make decisions that you.
Don't agree.
You don't agree with, that, that's not true in every single, I shouldn't say categorically, there are instances where there is no right to appeal, but I believe this is an instance when you could appeal it up to circuit court.
I would assume, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, perfect, um, are you guys able to, my last question, I guess, when, when the state says they can't get involved? Can you guys cherry pick on what case by case situation is under state law? I don't know if you could answer that.
The, the state is over us, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that I, no one here can give you that answer today, I don't think that question is something that, I mean, again, in order for official action to be made, there has to be an agenda item.
Okay, and then they can talk about it, the, the laws and stuff.
Yep.
Okay, so let's, yeah, let's get that on the agenda, and then, uh, I gotta go to Drew for that, or, or is it already?
Wouldn't be to writing, I would like to appeal.
Okay, perfect. Sweet, and I, is there any questions? Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. Um, and I don't know if he said his name.
You wanna stick around?
Was that Patrick Mansour, is that his name?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Do I have anything to say?
Nope, I sure don't. I was just gonna probably be an investor in that.
So that's the process we have to go through.
Yep. So there'll be a, a more robust meeting, it sounds like, that, uh, that you'll just wanna watch for or check in with Drew or, or Patrick about when that's scheduled for, so.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Now, I'm gonna take a motion to go into executive session for legal, and.
And contractual, contractual also, or just legal?
Yeah, I think both was original.
Uh, I move that we go to executive session for legal and contractual.
Second. A motion of a second, any further, or all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes, we're in executive session.
Thank you.
Those are the good ones. Oh, no.
I think so.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session. A motion of a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes, we're in regular session, anybody have anything else?
Argus second on adjournment motion I've ever seen.
A motion of a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we're adjourned, thank you.